I'm going to go ahead and call our July 28, 2021 Finance Committee meeting to order. It looks like we have a quorum here tonight. We have one item on the agenda, Resolution Number 112021, and then other items to be determined by committee chairman. We received the claims for approval as a council yesterday. So since this meeting was already scheduled, I ask Tyler, the Controller Tyler, if he could answer a few questions, if we had any with that tonight. So I was going to, I'm adding that to our agenda. But to begin with, we have a Resolution Number 11, Approval of the Collective Bargaining Agreement with the City of Lawrence and Lawrence Firefighters Association. And we have a few representatives here tonight, Andy Rall and Nick Rumel with Lawrence Local 416. So I thought if it's all right, I would start with maybe Nick and Andy, if either of you could give us maybe a high-level overview of the contract. We were provided a copy in advance, but any pieces you think we need to really take a look at before we begin this discussion?
Yeah, I'll go through the summary for you. I know the agreement as a whole is kind of a lot to take in. I want to say it's 35 pages or something. So I'll basically just kind of highlight the items that were changed for this year, the things that were carried over from the prior contract. I won't cover those unless somebody has a specific question about one of those items. So I'll just run through it kind of year by year. In the contract, there's a couple of different ways that firefighters are compensated. We get the salary and the longevity based on how many years of service you have. And those are the two typically the most important items because those are used to calculate the pension base, which is of course the retirement and the disability calculation. So in addition to that, we can get an extra pay for promotions of rank or specialties like paramedic, tactical pays or technical pays like rope rescue or confined space or different things like that. I think there's 10 or 11 specialty pays. So that's, that's kind of the ways that we get, we get paid. For 2021, the, we have a 5% raise salary increase across the board for all ranks, which was effective retroactively back to January 1. In addition to that, we instituted a match on the 457 Retirement Savings Plan. The city is contributing $25 into each member's account per paycheck if the member is also contributing at least $25. And that's the cap on that at a one-to-one ratio.
And that piece is new?
That's, that's, we've had the 457 in place for several years, but this is the first time that there's been a matching initiated by the city. And we've been, we've been working on that for a little while. We're trying to incentivize the members to save a little bit more for their retirement just to have some extra, extra funds in addition to the pension amounts. So that's a, that's a good step in the right direction there, we think. For 2022, there is no salary increase written into the budget, or I'm sorry, into the contract. At the time we were negotiating, we were still kind of in a little bit of unknown territory with the COVID relief funds and different finance, financing things that were going on. So the administration didn't want to commit to a, to a number at that point, but they've kind of stood by the pledge that if the funds are available, then they would be able to potentially do a 3% raise or something in that area for 2022. But that's not included in this contract. So that would be something we would add in at the salary ordinance later on. The paramedic pay has been $3,000 a year, the specialty pay for quite, for a long time. That's increasing to 4,000 per year for paramedics. And the 457 matching that we discussed, that, that cap would go up from $25 a pay up to $40 a pay beginning in 2022. And then what the last item for '22 is the longevity. So right now, longevity is calculated at .45% per year of service after your third year. So a guy with five years would have two years that count towards the longevity. So he would get two years calculated at .45% times the third-year firefighter base salary. So it works out to about $290 per year of service that's added into your base pay. In 2022, that longevity rate increases to .55% per year of service increased from .45. So that takes us to 2023. In 2023, we're back to a 3% salary increase for all ranks, a 3% increase on base pay. In addition, the paramedic specialty pay increases again from 4,000 up to $5,000 per year for paramedics. The 457 match goes up to $50 per pay for the cap from 40 the year before, and then longevity increases to .65%. So that's 2023. And then 2024 is the final year of this contract. It's a four-year, four-year agreement. 2024 has in a 3% increase per salary and then the longevity increasing to .75%, up from .65% the year before. And then there's another change in 2024 because the Indiana Senate, Senate Bill 396, they changed the way the pension base is calculated. That law passed this year. It was the third-year firefighter salary plus the 20-year longevity is how they come up with the pension base amount. After they pass that, it changes it to the 20-year salary plus the 25-year longevity. So they've increased, they've added five years of longevity onto the pension base calculation. So in 2024, that change is reflected in our, in our salary as well. So the longevity used to cap out at 20 on the percentage base. So after 20 years of service, a guy would get an additional $100 per year. So once somebody had, let's say, 23 years on the job, they would get the 20-year longevity at .45% per year. And then after that, it's just a flat rate of $100. But this change in this Senate bill allows us to take the percentage-based longevity up to 25 years. So that's when that would cap out now. That changes at 24. Aside from that, the specialty pays, the technical pays and things that we talked about, the rope rescue, swift fire rescue, there was no change in those items for this, this agreement. The, the closing allowance stays the same, which is $600 per year. The quartermaster is also unchanged. The minimum staffing of apparatus, there's no changes there. We still are trying to get four firefighters on apparatus 90% of the, of the time throughout the year. No changes to vacation pay, or sorry, vacation time, holiday, sick time, any of those kind of things. Those are all the same. And then the firefighters awards banquet, the city agrees to contribute $5,000 for the cost of the award banquet, not to include the purchase of any alcohol, so food, venue rentals, things like that. That's the, the summary and the changes for this year. If you have any questions, we'll, we'll address those now.
I just want to lead off with just a couple real quick. How many paramedics do we actually have that will be affected by the $1,000 increase?
We have, Nick, if you know. I want to say it's 20.
I want to say, last time I checked, we're, we're, well, we lost two or three this last year, so I want to say we're, we're below the 20.
Just a second, let me, I can pull that up. Roughly 20 then. I think Nick may have froze, or if it's just on mine.
Is it mine?
Sorry, my computer is freezing up as well. But yeah, I think 20 is, is a rough accurate number.
And two more items, Counselor Giles, and I'll, I'll jump off just, or I'll, I'll open it up just a little bit more. In the one section you just mentioned about the, what was it, the banquet, there's another section in there, college incentive pay. And it reads, "College of Incentive Pay for All Members and Employees of the Fire Department shall be fixed by the Common Council by ordinance for the ensuing budget year." Is that something the Common Council needs to look at annually? Or is, should that have, or is that just part of the budget? And Tyler, Andy, whoever knows the answer to that, please feel free to jump in.
Yeah, that's included in the salary ordinance, but it, it hasn't changed in several years. The amounts and the way that that's been, been compensated hasn't changed. So it is in there. If at some point anybody wanted to make a change to that, we would certainly have discussed that. But nothing, nothing new in there.
Yeah, so I know Counselor Chavis and Counselor Giles probably knew the answer to that already, but, and then my only other question, how does this affect your competitiveness for new hires? Do you feel this is a contract that will attract new hires or make us more competitive as a, as a department?
Yeah.
The city.
Sorry, Nick, if you want to go ahead.
This brings us in line with the rest of Marion County. Definitely makes us more marketable when we start talking about interviewing, sorry, hiring processes and stuff. I know a couple of us have talked about that in the past. It, it definitely brings us in line with the rest of Marion County. Does it take us over, over people? No, not by any means, but it does bring us in line with everybody else. Should put us right in the middle of the road. Now Pike, I think Pike and Wayne are both doing negotiation, sorry, Pike, Wayne, and Decatur are both, all three doing negotiations right now. So they're going to move, move ahead of us possibly. They might move right beside us. I know there's a lot of adjustments that are happening based on that, moving things up to your 25, like we talked about with the state bill passing this year. That's going to cause people to have a little bit of a, a jump. And that kind of works out in our favor this year and your, and the last year of our contract,
I muted myself, sorry. Thank you for that, Nick. I really appreciate it. And so Counselor Giles, appreciate your patience. Please feel, forget to jump in, or Counselor Chavis, whatever thoughts or questions you may have.
I just had some questions for clarity's sake, to make sure that I am following the conversation correctly. We talk about those 20 paramedics. Those are firefighters, right? With the medical, with the paramedic certif, you know, additional training. Those are not, we have those firefighters on top of our full-time paramedics.
That's, that's correct.
Okay, okay. I just wanted to make sure of that.
All the firefighters are required to be a minimum of an EMT, and then the paramedic is the next step higher. And we, our goal as a department was to have one paramedic assigned to each apparatus in addition to the medics that are on the ambulances.
So one of the questions I was getting at, one of the questions I was going to ask kind of led into it was, do you think that incentivizing firefighters to be paramedics might help us with our paramedic shortage issues that we've had in the past with not being able to recruit paramedics, but maybe cross-training our firefighters to kind of assist in those, in that area?
Well, it'll certainly incentivize firefighters who are considering becoming a paramedic or firefighters who already have their paramedic cert to, to keep that certification. The paramedic job can be pretty stressful. It's an 18-month course to, to go through to get your paramedic cert in addition to after you're already an EMT. So it's a pretty big commitment to get, to get the cert to begin with. So some people may think, oh, well, you know, for 2,500 bucks or 3,000 bucks, it may not be worth it. So the five, the four and the 5,000 may, may incentivize people to, to get those certifications or to keep them once that they, they have them already. So I do think that'll, that'll help retain and attract some more paramedics within the fire, the fireside. Now, that's not affecting the civilian paramedics that are on the ambulances because we're not negotiating their, their contract at this time.
Right. And so I know we're not negotiating their contract, but just as far as labor, just try, you know, I don't understand the operation of the stations completely, but I'm trying to figure out that on the civilian side, we have a hard time recruiting and, you know, and keeping paramedics and EMTs. And so what I was trying to figure out is if we continue to incentivize our firefighters to be medics, would that make for better service in Lawrence and maybe take the burden off the, the department from trying to, you know, find all these, these, these medics that they said they've had a hard time, you know, keep there and stuff?
Well, I would say it definitely helps the civilian side, especially on some of the bigger runs that you might have, like a cardiac arrest or gunshot wound, because now you need more than one paramedic. You need, you need different paramedics doing different things. So the civilian medic would maybe not have, be so stressed because he knows he has another medic to help him out coming on the fire apparatus. But insofar as hiring or incentivizing more civilian paramedics to, to apply on the ambulance side, I don't know that this will necessarily help, help with that, but.
So what does it help with? So for making, because see, I'm, I'm not trying to be, you know, but I have heard that firefighters are medics, but they don't want to do the job.
I would disagree with that. I think that the medics, the medics do want to do the job of patient care, and, and a lot of the medics take pride in any of that.
No, no, I mean, as far as taking, I'm not saying what they're doing. And I mean, do we have firefighters taking those medic runs at a high level?
Well, when we do have, again, those more complicated, complicated runs, they'll let the medics do ride in on the ambulance with the civilian crew on those types of runs. Or if it's a BLS ambulance, so they don't have a, a medic on the ambulance, our medics would ride in on those ambulance calls as well.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
So I have a question, Mr. Chair, as it relates to the budget. So for the, the raw 457B contribution that the city would be making, help me understand what the financial impact is from 2021 to 2024. What's the total cost of that?
It sounded like you were asking Counselor Denny that, but.
No, Tyler, that's a question for you.
The total cost from '21 to '24? I mean, I don't have the exact number of what the contribution would be on our end, but I believe in '21, we started budgeting for an employer contribution to that anyways. So in '21 at least, we, we've already been planning on it. So this isn't anything new for us.
So I, I might be able to help out a little bit on that one. Now, so we have 80, I believe we have 81 firefighters currently on the, on the roles here. And of course, we're talking 24 pays per year. If, let's say if 80 firefighters are on contributing the minimum to get the match, so 80 times 24 times $25 a pay, works out to $48,000 for this, for this, for one year. And then.
And then it goes from basically 50 to 80 to 100, roughly.
It would sap out at $50 a pay times 24 pays times 80 firefighters to be a total of 96,000 per year. But that's assuming that all 80 firefighters are contributing, which we don't have that much participation right now.
I mean, that's, that's good enough. I just wanted the ballpark. That's fine.
Sure.
And, and Controller, that was more for, you know, because we're going to be looking every year at opportunities for salary increases. Obviously, this is a additional budget item to the city that we hadn't previously been, you know, factoring in. So that's good. I'm, that's fine. That answers that question. The next question I have is as it relates to the holiday pay. So Tyler, do you, do you happen to know the city's position on Juneteenth, if that's going to be added as a holiday?
I can't give you 100% on that, but it did come up this year, and that is a decision the mayor still needs to make. I think there's a, I don't know if there's a total limit to the number of holidays, but if that were to be added, one would be removed. So he's got to make that decision, but I know he had asked Jeanette about that, and it was something they're discussing.
Counselor Chavis? Just a comment. The council sets the city holidays by statute, by ordinance, not the mayor. Now, whether or not we can afford it is a, is a question, but you all set the holidays of the city.
Okay.
And I think I would add just one piece to that. Isn't this a, Juneteenth now recognized as a federal holiday?
Yes, it is.
So we would have to recognize all federal holidays.
Yeah, so that's why I ask, is, it's a, it's a, it's now a federal holiday. And really what I was getting at is, and this might, this is a question probably going to come from, from our firefighters, but the bonus pay, if we add an additional holiday, does that, does that then increase the bonus hours?
So we don't actually receive holiday pay. We, we get 96 hours of holiday time to be able to use, sort of similar to like vacation time. So.
I meant the bonus hours, I'm sorry. Would, would, would any calculation in that section change if we added another holiday? That's really the question.
I don't believe that, well, I don't know the answer to that one. I'm, I'm not sure if they calculated the 96 hours as a, as a fraction of the number of holidays that were available.
I was thinking, yeah.
Yeah, four days.
I was thinking the same exact thing, like it's probably calculated as a fraction of the total number of holidays. I don't know that that's true. I, that's why I was asking if anyone happened to know.
That's another one that's been the same for the last 10 years, actually before Nick and I were, were employed here. So I don't know how they did that, but it hasn't changed.
Yeah, because we haven't, we haven't had any holiday changes in, you know what I mean? Federal holiday changes in a very long time, so that would make sense. Okay. That's all I had.
All right.
Let me unmute myself there. I think I had then just one other slight question as it relates to COVID. And I don't think anything changed in that section, Nick or Andy, which is section four, where it says firefighter injured or contracting disease. But could you just maybe remind us if a firefighter somehow contracts COVID through their, their duties, what the city will do and make sure that this contract does protect the firefighter or the, the paramedic EMS if that happens?
Yeah, so this was one that was hit in downtown's council, and it actually died in, at the council. They wanted to add COVID to the presumptive law, which is basically like if, if one of us were to contract like HIV or tuberculosis, it's just assumed, it's presumed that we've got it, gotten it on the job. They wanted to add COVID to that. It died in the, in the house. So that, that's something that, that's something that would have worked out in our favor. As for right now, I believe the city is still, we haven't changed the way we're doing, doing anything. Earlier this year, we, we had the COVID relief fund that we were using at the end of last year. At the beginning of this year, our administration really stepped up to the plate in, in terms of, we have a, a bank of sick hours that we all donate time to, and we're able to, to cut into that if somebody were to get COVID. And they don't have to, in order to use that, in order to buy back into it, you have to donate a specific amount of time. They don't, they don't have to donate that amount of time to, to get back into the fund. So they really stepped up to the plate and kind of took care of the guys. If you, if you get it, we're basically just pulling from that, that bank to take care of those, those firefighters during that time.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, it's, I didn't realize that. It sounds like they had time to adjust the pension by five years, but not make sure we were protected by COVID. So that might be something we need to, to holler down to our, our State House to, to take a second look at.
Yep.
Is there any other questions then from other committee members?
No, I'd like to make a motion to recommend to full council.
And do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a, a motion to recommend to the full council in a second. I'll do a roll call vote. Counselor Chavis?
Yes.
Counselor Giles? I think he meant to unmute himself. Wait.
He's having problems there, yes.
Okay, no problem. And Counselor Denny? Yes. So the recommendation will go to the full council with unanimous vote, three zeros. Thank you, Representatives from 416, Nick and Andy, for coming out tonight and discussing this with us. I really appreciate it.
No problem. Anytime.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Yeah, we got a little bit longer to go.
Oh, you do?
One more agenda item. And then, as I said at the very beginning, we just wanted to touch real quick, I wanted to add to the agenda, our claims for approval, which we received yesterday. As you know, we were discussing Ice Miller, and I saw on this one that there was a slight change to what's being requested, Controller, the next one. Could you just explain that change a little bit? Because I think that, that may resolve the issue that, that was before the last meeting.
So we, with this change, we're below the threshold. I did reach out to them, but we were kind of in the middle of this weird transition because we were following attorneys from one firm to the next. So I kind of just told them, you know, if you want to go through the process of getting a contract through, but, and built out, because there was no real contract agreement for Ice Miller at the time, I just kind of, you know, I was talking with them, and they're just willing to drop the, when I think it was March and April, because I think effectively we were almost double-covered as multiple attorneys were moving at the same time. So we did owe them back for December, and I think we owed them for February invoice, but this puts us below the threshold for the 25,000. But when we have a full contract with TAFT, you guys will see that.
Perfect, thank you. Because by my calculation, that puts us at 24,000 by the, the adjustment that you had.
Close, but yeah, yeah, right there, so.
Exactly. Did, did Counselor Giles or Counselor Chavis, did you have any additional comments or questions regarding the, the claims?
Well, I guess, I guess we're going to see the, the contract for TAFT, but I guess I'm a little confused as to how much, what dollar amount we're at with TAFT year-to-date.
I have an email for an invoice, but we haven't paid, I don't think we've paid anything to, to TAFT yet.
Given that they just moved over there, there's nothing, I don't think they processed anything yet over there, but we, they are, or were our corporation counsel, or they still are our corporation counsel. And then they also, when the one attorney moved, so did our diversity and minority supplier, I think was what the other one was.
Right.
So, yeah, we haven't really paid them anything. And I'd like to have a contract in place that we can get to you guys before you see an invoice, even if we haven't reached that threshold yet, so.
Yeah, because really, we, I just want to make it clear, Chair, that, you know, it's, we don't want to get to the threshold or close to the threshold and then have a contract. We want a contract before the work, ideally before the work even starts, right? So I don't, I don't want us to like sort of get in the habit of like, oh, we get to 24, now we go get a contract. We should already have a contract, really. We should have one before they even start doing the work.
So the, I'm going to get you this once. I think it's going to be structured a little bit differently. We'll have TAFT on kind of an as-needed basis, so we won't pay a monthly retainer. So we may not even actually hit 25,000 with them, but there is the potential for that happening. So because that could happen, you know, I would want to get something in place in advance. But yeah, so if there's an hourly rate agreed upon, and then we start to get closer to it, you could see something like that. But I'd still want to get a contract in advance.
So, and I think you said this, and I just want to make sure I'm clear. So you said they're corporation counsel and they're, okay.
Well, they, yeah, they were corporation counsel, and then we were using them for the diversity and minority supplier, so two separate. and minority supplier, so two separate things. But yeah, that's what they'll be providing.
And tell me about the diverse supplier thing, because I don't really know much about that.
Jeanette would probably be the best person to give you more clarity, but essentially they were helping us. I think one of the members there was the former director for women and minority business development for Indianapolis, drawing a blank on her name, but she's been working with Jeanette to kind of weed through all the policies that have to go in place, because I think that department in Indianapolis is like a six-person department. So trying to get a process in place that works with our existing processes and so.
Okay.
I had a question. I had a question on that. Is that a new, is that a new role or an old role?
You could.
Because I'm not familiar, I'm not familiar with those services happening at Ice Miller. I don't think the person that you talked about worked at Ice Miller that long. I think they were at the city.
Yeah, so you're asking if the role for us is new or a role with?
No, we're talking about bills that need to be paid, and you're saying that some of these bills that are paid are from the roles that they serve to us as an ad-needed basis by doing some of the minority business diversity stuff. And you're stating that they have someone that now is at Taft that you believe maybe moved over. We're talking about Ice Miller at this point, right? We're not even talking about Taft. So what I'm saying is, I was never made aware of someone working that role at Ice Miller. I was told that our diversity supplier stuff was being worked through in-house, and I had been pushing. And even through this fire station deal, I personally tried to get the city to arrange with mid-state supplier, diversity supplier council to be able to provide, you know, that role. I was never referred to Ice Miller or anyone at Ice Miller to work with. And so I'm just curious that if there was someone we were paying to do that at Ice Miller, I was never made aware of that.
So, yeah, it's not like an outsourced position. It's, we do have that position in-house, but I think with Ice Miller is when it started picking up more. I don't know when Jeanette was put in that position. I don't know when her start date was on her new role. She came in as HR Director, also received a new role probably sometime last year, maybe, maybe sooner.
I'm not talking about Jeanette. I'm talking about Ice Miller services.
Right, but I'm trying to answer your question. So this is what I'm saying. So once she was trying to expand the role, then Ice Miller was brought in to help her weed through all the details and all the things she needed, so.
So what I'm saying is, I was digging into details, looking for suppliers to work on our fire station as well as our police station. I have been the biggest critic and the biggest proponent of diversity supplier, and no one told me ever that we had someone at Ice Miller assisting, working with under this. So I just want to know what the vouchers paid for, what like, if you say that's what we're paying for, I never was made aware of that, and I don't understand why it was
I, you know, I can't go back and speak to what questions you may have asked or what information may have been given. I just know.
I'm asking you, who was the person in the role at Ice Miller that we're paying?
Oh, yeah, I don't have their name. I don't know.
Well, I would like for you to get that for them.
Okay, well, I can get that for you, but yeah, at the top of my head, I don't.
Because I know that the person you speak of did not work at Ice Miller at that time.
Okay. What, so, okay, what's the name that you're thinking of at Taft?
It doesn't matter. I know who it is. Find out the name for me.
All right, well, let's leave it at, we'll figure that out and then move on.
Why, I'm sorry, Chair, the reason is because I, as a counselor, has taken my own personal time, or personally fighting for the city, for the people diversity. If I had, if we were paying someone to do this, then why was I spending my time running around the city trying to find suppliers to fulfill our needs?
And that may be a good question to follow back up on. I did ask this question via email last month, and the response was that this Ice Miller person was specifically helping, specifically helping Jeanette and wasn't doing any other sources. So maybe we can get some clarity on what that assistance to Jeanette actually was.
Yeah.
Does that help Counselor Giles or?
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. But I do have, since we were brought up Fire Station 38, I do have another question about one of the invoices with American Structure Point. There's about $158,000 on this month's, or this, yeah, this month's claims that are dated from 2020. One is, what's the process for paying something that's close to a year old? And two, if this had to do with Fire Station 38, shouldn't it be paid out of the bond issuance that we've approved, or is this something coming out of the separate budget line somewhere else?
Yes, I would agree. So we will be reimbursed this money from the bond proceeds once they're issued, but to get to the, it's a difficult process because you can't issue the debt until you get to a bidding point, but you need all the design work done to get you there to bid it so you can get the money to pay for the bidding. So it's kind of backwards. So we have to pay at least that 160 for the schematic design. It'll help us get to the bid process so we can get the bond proceeds in-house, and then we can pay ourselves back, basically.
Okay, so the design work for Fire Station 38 was done between April 1 of 2020 to July 30th of 2020.
Yeah, they started the process, I mean, I know it took them a while, but yeah, that's when they started the whole process. Or the original, I think originally when they were reached out to, yeah. So they kind of had been billing us, but they had to hold them until, you know, as long as they could.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Counselor Giles.
All right, so Tyler, I know you're new, and I apologize for unfortunately, you know, being quite there, but you're not fully new. You were working in the office, so I'm sure you worked on some of these projects and paid attention to some of the meetings that had been going on prior to accepting your role. All throughout the bid process, I mean, all throughout the lease financing process, I asked this question over and over and over and over again, if the design was done to get the bidding. And I was told that the design had not been done yet, and then I see a bill for $160,000. So I'm curious, could you please give us some more explanation? And it was, you know, done a year ago, and my questions were in the spring to maybe late winter, you know, from January until we passed it in, you know, May or whatever. So can you please explain about why or how, or where this work comes from, because it wasn't presented when asked upon in April?
Yeah. So, I mean, the way I'm understanding it, it was a multi-phase process, and that schematic design was the title for Phase 1, but they weren't actually done with the full design until recently. But that doesn't get us to the, so there's two different sets. Then there's the construction documents that would actually allow you to take it to bid. So that, even this 167, they're still holding additional invoices that would get us to construction, but they're going to hold those just so that we can get to that process. So it's kind of, I think it'd be better to have Structure Point explain to you the whole process, because.
All right, well, I think that's really good that you say that, so I appreciate that. I appreciate that, because the process had not been explained to us. I wish that somewhat now, I'll be honest with you, I've done some more research today and had to make some phone calls, and now I understand that this is a percentage of it, but that wasn't done, that wasn't said before. So I'll ask you this question. What percentage of this bill, of the total bill, are we paying now? How much is the total bill of the design are we expecting to pay?
This is about a third.
This is about a third? So it's about 8% of the total cost of the building is what the design is?
Check your math on that one, just to be, I don't want to say yes, it's not right.
Pretty, I'm just approximating. I didn't do the calculator. This is all in my head.
Sure.
Pretty close, right? That's just good old ghetto math. So why, that's a, that's big money.
I mean, because in the total scope for them, it's designing it, taking it to bid, and then they are overseeing the construction.
So why am I just now seeing the bill after I've released the money? I had no clue that the Structure Point cost, I mean, we're seeing costs now after the money, and some of the costs you had before the money. If you knew that 30% of it is billed now, then you could have forecasted to me that it was going to be 8%, because that's the standard, and that's how much it was going to be, you know, was going to be. But no one said that to me until after we authorized the money, and then folks want to know why I'm skeptical, why I'm aggressive, and why I, you know, talk that way, that's because it seems as to be, once it comes to it, there's always a hidden ball. I know, Mr. Chair, you can do that, but I am going to then put a motion. I put a motion that these are not, that these invoices are not approved until we hear from Structure Point directly, that they're removed, that we recommend to full council that Structure Point invoices be removed from being voted on until we hear from Structure Point for more detailed information about it.
So why don't Counselor Giles, we wait until the full council meeting, and then when we make a motion to approve the vouchers, we just ask for it to be excluded at that point?
Why discuss it in the finding?
Counselor Chavis wants to second it.
Yeah, we have to do that, right? Because this is just discussion. We're not, it's not an actionable thing yet until it's on the agenda. We are just given the controller opportunity to answer any questions that we may have prior to our meeting on Monday. So I think it would be prudent to, for the controller to make sure that Structure Point is available to answer the questions or explain it on Monday, right?
Well, and I understand that, and I will respectfully disagree with the both of you, because everything that comes out of committee is a recommendation to full council to be voted on. And so, you know, and so I've looked at this as an opportunity, since we brought it up, to be able to make a recommendation to our full council members of how we feel about it. And so I understand that you may not agree with me, but that's how I feel with the council.
Yeah, but understand that I didn't assign this to committee. I didn't.
No, 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 I'm talking about, he just signed it to the finance committee, and finance committee can make a recommendation to the full committee.
Right, he doesn't have the authority to assign anything to the committee, only I do.
Add the vouchers to the agenda. And regardless, without a second, there's no motion to force the vote on.
Right, but I'm saying, but it could be recommended out of this committee to full committee for not pass on those vouchers, and even have to vote again. But I don't understand, I get it. I, that's part of the reason why I never really brought these type of discussions up in finance, because they're kind of limited on what we could really do. And I'm a little fired up. I'm fired up, I'm sorry, I feel lied to.
Yeah, you're okay.
I'm sorry.
You're okay, yeah.
In the future, I can certainly assign vouchers to the finance committee for recommendation.
And then we can.
I mean, I just feel like we have to scrutinize these vouchers. I'm saying, we may have to take this finance committee and scrutinize these vouchers line by line, and we don't have time to do that in, you know, in our regular full council meetings. But it looks to me that this type of overview is what's needed.
Yeah.
Because we're getting too many.
Well, we can certainly do that. We can certainly, we can certainly assign this as a standing item to come out of this committee for a recommendation. The only thing is, we just need to make sure that we always have a finance meeting before we're going to vote on the vouchers, right? So it's putting the burden on us that we always have to have a finance meeting. So as long as we understand that, I think it's okay.
So far, what I've either emailed any questions that were sent to me, and always got a timely response, which we forwarded on. It's really been in the last couple of weeks, we've had some questions about some of the vouchers.
Well, the thing that I'm really upset about is I don't even understand, and this is what's good about the process to talk, like you just said, Mr. Chair, we were under oppression when we were voting for the Freedom Money, that these sorts of expenses would come out of the leasing money later. Now, I understand Mr. Controller's explanation, and I appreciate it, and I think it's, you know, fair and truthful in the way it is, but I wish that I would have that information in some sort of way prior to this. And so again, I don't want to talk too long, but, you know, I just, it's just frustrating, it really is, to see these sorts of bills pop up.
I do have to agree on something, and I want to keep the topic just on paying the bills and the finance in some ways. And then as Counselor Chavis said, we can refer this back to finance, you know, for later on if we want to, or discuss it ever how that August meeting comes out. And I would add that I agree with you, because I did ask specifically what the energy savings was going to be for the new building, and I was told there wasn't, the plan wasn't designed, it wasn't fully designed in order for us to get that. So, Controller, you're right. I think a few responses from Structure Point may be helpful at the next meeting. And yes, Counselor, please.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Mr. Chair. My sound's been going in and out, so I couldn't even tell if you could hear me. To Counselor Giles' point, my recollection, when you asked if there were drawings, and you were told there were no drawings, really you were just asking to see what the plans looked like. You understood it was early in the process. So I guess my question is, you know, if Structure Point is willing to come in and talk to you about your questions, do you not also, and I know you want to keep it to vouchers, but do you not also want to see the work product?
That would be helpful.
Yeah.
Well.
Yeah, we do, yes.
Yeah, for fairness, I mean, I would say at least three or four counselors have asked a question, including myself, about the design over the past six, seven months. It was part of every discussion that we had. So, yeah, we want to see the design, because, I mean, what we, it would be nice to see if we're paying $150,000, $160,000, what we're paying for, specifically when we were told that there wasn't such a thing.
Right.
And we're being billed for something about, what, 15, 16 months ago?
Yeah. And Heather, the question was, the question the council asked was, how can you estimate a cost for something that you don't have a design for?
That's exactly.
And the answer was, well, we use our business judgment and experience, which may very well be true, but what, just to be clear, what we're hearing now is, there were preliminary designs when we were told there were none, and that the, that we don't have them, and now apparently they're finished, and it's, you know, this is a third of the total cost, and this council hasn't seen any of that work product. So I think that's the concern.
That even more broad, just within the conversation we've had in the last couple of meetings, obviously $158,000 is more than $25,000. I understand you're saying that that's going to be reimbursed when the bonds are actually issued, but does that mean that that rule is waived? Are we still, you know, applicable to that? Is there a contract that was signed that we needed to approve? You know, there's a couple of different questions there that maybe we should dive into before actually getting, you know, paying this actual bill. So this will probably be in our August meeting, Controller, and we'd like to bring it up then as well.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair. That's exactly what I was trying to, you know, what I'm trying to get by. Thank you.
Yeah, and Counselor Giles, to your point, you know, it would be helpful for you to walk us to the 8%, you know, step by step. If we have to approve X number of vouchers, and we should expect to be reimbursed by X time, you know, what we don't have to approve that's going to come right out of the bond, you know, that would be helpful to know, because we don't want to like continue to just have this same conversation. If you tell us upfront, we should expect two or three more invoices to amount to, you know, X amount of dollars, and this is sort of the timing of when we should receive them, and this is the. and this is the reimbursement process, then we can, we don't have to like have this discussion every single time about paying Structure Point for this particular work that they're doing.
Yeah. And just piggybacking on what you're saying, I think it's, there's not an avoidance to pay the bills as much as it is just an explanation as to how we got here, specifically when, when it was asked, you know, at the other meetings, and the other, the council as a whole meeting, you know, what, what drawings were out there, what, what could we see? If that all makes sense. All right. If there are no other questions regarding this, I don't have any other items on the agenda. So with that, the Finance Committee meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody, for coming tonight. I really appreciate it.
Thank you.